Assembled via Zoom. So, as you all know, I will do the roll call and I'm going to start with my left, which is Teresa Gilreath, Commissioner Gilreath.
President.
Okay, Commissioner Fields.
President.
Commissioner Kern.
President.
Commissioner Bullock.
President.
Commissioner Toby.
President.
So, one, two, three, four, five. So, we are missing Commissioner Bridges and Mayor Protem Harris. Okay? And welcome Alan, Cindy, Cheryl Hart, Hakun, Mary Yount, Roger Elliott, then Tina Cheek. That's good to see everybody. First off, I just want to thank everybody again for all the Energy Board and staff members alike that you all invested into our strategic planning session on Saturday. So, thank you for that. A lot of hard work and attention paid. And the only thing we have on our agenda today is to set the agenda for next week. And so, we'll proceed with standard call to order, public comments, public hearing to receive citizen input on the rezoning request consisting of 4.25 acres to the Walmart shopping area. Does anybody have any questions about this item at this time?
No.
Okay. And Cheryl, is it possible to make sure that that map is, that you sent out to us is included in the agenda packet? Did you hear, Cheryl, did you hear that?
We'll make sure.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you very much. And just some explanation to make sure that we understand the changes. Okay, item four, consider accepting the certificate of sufficiency for petition of voluntary contiguous annexation of 4.25 acres located on Lewis Street adjacent to the Outt parcel at Walmart Shopping Center. So, this is the same. So, this is about annexation. Does anybody have any questions about this item? Okay, so, we have, so is there no action item on annexing? Wait, okay, recommended, hang on. On the public hearing, Cindy, there is no action item underneath the public hearing.
Yeah, we have to wait the 24 hours and then vote.
Okay, so can you maybe put that action item in there and with the admonishment to wait 24 hours? So, we can set that up with the board next week, please?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
What is, what are you talking about?
After you remember, so it's been a while since we've had a public hearing. And normally after we have the public hearing about the rezoning, then we would go ahead and there would be a discussion about whether or not the board wants to rezone. But since it is, we're still meeting remotely, we have to have that 24-hour waiting period before we vote.
Well, I thought you'd move to the next five.
Well, I did. And then I went back because I saw.
So, you're going back. Okay, I got your name.
I apologize for not being clear. I went back because I saw the recommended action from the certificate of sufficiency and went back and it was like, wait a minute, we're missing the action. And that's what I, I kept looking for the action and then just, so I apologize. Hang on, so I'm just making myself a note. Okay. Item C, consider approving the sub-recipient agreement between the City of Oxford and Bramble County Social Services as part of the 2020 coronavirus assistance Community Development Block Grant Project, paying the social services up to $60,000. Do any of you have any questions on this item?
Well, I was trying to figure out exactly, I understand the importance of engaging social services, but the $60,000 is to do what? Do they decide what to do with it? Or what is their purpose? Other than, I understand them facilitating stuff, but they typically would have done that anyway.
But what they, what we envisioned them doing is taking the application, screening them, because one of the important components of this grant is to prevent the duplication of funds. Social Services, they're already doing these type of things. So, we need their help to ensure that we're not duplicating something that they've already given money to. They were included in our application because one of the strong points in submitting the application is working with other agencies. And we did list Department of Social Services as the agency that we will work closely with.
Okay, so Commissioner Gilreath, your question is, why do we need to pay them if they already do this kind of screening information?
Well, that was sort of my question. I was wondering, in addition to what else would they typically do that warrants the additional money? I mean, but, but I understand it. Say that again?
We're taking up their staff time. They are doing a lot for us.
I got you. Okay, I'm good. I was just curious.
So, I have a follow-up to that because, I mean, it makes perfect sense. So, there's no question about the validity of this. But if Social Services is going to be doing all the legwork, so if I see it, it's 7.5% of the $799,044 that you said they're going to be in charge of. The agreement says they're going to be distributing. Then what is the person that we voted for as contractor for? Because I thought that person was going to be doing this. So.
He's going to be totally involved in that. But he is going to be representing us for all procurement items turned into the state, for all auditing, for all monitoring, and making sure that we turn in all our correct forms in that's needed. So, he's going to be making sure the checks and the balances and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, that, that sounds good. So, then my only question is, is kind of a forward-looking, if we do something like this again, and there are two separate things, even if you don't know the information like about Social Services at the time when we're making a contract, maybe mention in the discussion about the first contractor that there's going to be another sub-recipient, because it was kind of a shock to see $25,000 for the, which was, seemed like a deal with the, the other guy. But then to see a $60,000 was like, wait a minute. So.
If you, yes, ma'am. And I do understand and I will make a note of that. But if you will be mindful of the fact that the budget, when we submitted the application in September, that met the budget. We set aside 10% of the grant amount for the budget and we stayed within that. And with the other proposal that we had, that person had in their proposal to hire someone locally to assist them. So, either way, we would have had a sub-recipient.
Right. Yeah, so there's, and I'm not contesting any of that, but just saying, maybe, maybe give a little explanation when you're talking about the first, the first time something comes to the board, it might be helpful to have a sense of the whole scheme.
Yes, ma'am. Understood.
But, but this is wonderful and exciting. And so, please don't let my or Commissioner Gilreath's questions make you feel like this is such, so awesome.
There were, I expected those questions. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're, we're going to have a good meeting today.
Let the record note that Mayor Protem Harris has joined us. So, good to be. Mayor Protem, can we hear to make sure that we're, we're all hearing one another? Can we hear from you?
I'm not here.
I'm glad to know you're well. Thank you. Okay, um, going forward, item C, consider adopting various policies, procedures, and plans required for the 2020 City of Oxford Coronavirus Assistant Community Development Block Grant Project. Does anybody have any questions? It's quite a copious list of policies and procedures. Not the first time we've looked through a list like this. We had this the last time for the housing rehab, I believe. But does anybody have any questions for Cheryl Hart at this time?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Paige, well, first on, on page three, it talks about the project budget ordinance. And I don't think I could find that. And I kept looking forward.
I think it's the third document, so it's not within this part. But it's the last section, I think, one of the last section, action items. Well, it was included in the packet.
Okay.
So, not in that little part. If you move on back, you'll see it.
Okay, well, then I probably attached it to something else then. Then my question in this document would be, it talks about section three, section three plan. And I was just curious, do we have that whole document in its entirety?
That should be included in the agenda packet.
There is some documentation there about it. The whole document.
The whole document of section three?
Yes, ma'am. It talks about section three plan.
I'll, I'll look and see and make sure you get it and forward to everybody.
And Ms. Hart.
Section three is page 11.
Right.
Then 12 and 13 and 14.
So, and that's my question, is that the entire section three?
Yes, that's, that's what they included with what we have to hear to.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so it, when I'm thumbing through that entire section with the various policies and procedures, I also, and you said you didn't think the budget section was in there, and I do not see it either. And the one that follows it is the Fair Housing Resolution. That's attachment 4D. And then it goes in, oh, so I wonder, it goes 4D.
Budget ordinance should be closer to the back.
What item are we on?
We're on the policies and procedures quest.
What's that got to do with the budget ordinance? That's E.
No, several ordinances in here.
Right, so, so that's what, we had just looked at policies and procedures. So, then we were going to go forward. So, she, you're right, she asked it a little fast. Because you asked, budget ordinance is item E.
Well, no, that was, it was on the table of contents on page three is what I did.
Okay. And it does look like it's missing from the.
The ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It is, and I don't know why. And I apologize for that.
Good.
Now, we're, I'll make sure everyone gets it in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the only reason why I asked the question in that order.
Yep, 4E is missing.
Okay.
Have we done 4D?
That's what we were just on.
No, I thought we were on 4C.
C.
We were on 4C.
Okay.
Yeah, we're on C.
We're on C. Does anybody else? But that's why Commissioner Gilreath was asking the question, because C has the table of contents for all the policies and procedures.
Exactly.
So, there we have it. Does anybody else have any questions about, okay, so Commissioner Gilreath, do you have another question about this item?
I do. With regards to the list of businesses within the community development project area on page 12 at the bottom of the affirmative action and business participation, do we already have that list?
What they did was, for NSCDBG grant, they just have that information in there included. But this project would not have that.
Okay.
So, that's just a blanket document that they have as policy and procedure. But this particular project wouldn't have it.
Okay, so will we be trying to participate and meet some of these goals that there, that is laid out directly above that?
We're going to try to meet all of the goals and, and, you know, in terms of fair housing and all that stuff that's.
The contractors?
Yes.
Okay. And, and.
Are you, are you still working on your questions, Commissioner?
No, I just can't read my own writing.
I'll be around tomorrow if you have any additional questions.
Yeah.
Okay, while you're looking at your writing, do any other board members have any questions about? And thank you, Commissioner Kern, for keeping us targeted on item C on this policies and procedures and plans section. Okay, before we move on to item D, Commissioner Gilreath, I was going to say, do you have, have you figured out your handwriting?
Well, well, I actually went through this page by page. And if things weren't clear, I wrote notes to myself. And the thing on page 15, it talks about relocation assistance. What would be the extent of that relocation assistance that's given by the city?
Yes, ma'am. So, again, that's one of those blankets on Community Development Block Grant statements. And in this case, we would not have a relocation because we're not working on anybody's house. So, that's a blanket policy, but it wouldn't pertain to what we're doing.
All right, okay, I'm, I'm good. Because I'm sitting here thinking, okay, because I've dealt with this in the past. And I'm thinking, so what exactly are we going to be doing then that warrants all of this? But I'm good. I am good. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking time to read everything. That's awesome. And questions are good. Okay, so are we ready to move on to item D?
No.
Oh, you still have questions on this site, section?
Yes, it talks about the PSAs will be periodically placed in the Bramble Gazette. Does that mean just a newspaper and we're not on?
Right.
Okay, I didn't want to bring that up because I didn't, I figured as much, but I said, well, let me make sure. Thank you. I am so sorry.
Commissioner, what page is that on?
Page 24.
So, since that is a personalized page, maybe we can at least change it to reflect our paper? No problem.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
Okay, yeah, because that's a page where we have some other things. Great. Thank you. Item, now are we ready to go to D? Commissioner? Are we good for moving on to D? I am. Okay. Because I think everybody else is already good. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, item D, consider adopting Fair Housing Resolution as part of the 2020 City of Oxford Coronavirus Assistant Community Development Block Grant. You have, by now, you should know for sure, you have that attachment. It is labeled page 33 with the heading page in front of it. In the packet after the entire section that we just discussed, does anybody have any questions about this? Okay, item E, consider adopting a budget ordinance as part of the 2020 City of Oxford Coronavirus Assistant Community Development Block Grant. So, we now know that we don't have the budget ordinance yet to review, but Cheryl will send it out in the morning. Does anybody have any questions on this item? Okay. Item F is to adopt a memorandum of understanding. Looks like we need a type, we haven't got a typo there, Cindy. And a resolution for service from North Carolina Main Street and Rural Center, a Department of the North Carolina Department of Commerce to provide planning assistance on a citywide five-year economic development strategic plan for the City of Oxford. Does anybody have any questions on this item at this time?
Who would, who would get that training?
Who, who would get the training? I think it's a whole planning thing with regular meetings, not perhaps unlike what we did with the Main Street program and Liz Perim when we were doing, I mean, a different focus, but not dissimilar, am I correct? Mr. Thornton, Mary Yount is online to this kind of regular meetings to be planning and working together?
Yes, that is my understanding of the process. Yes, ma'am.
Mary, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, ma'am, that is the process.
Okay, so it's a regular, is it monthly meetings?
It will be the, ever how the group sets it up. But I think the way that Bruce has laid it out, it would be a monthly virtual meeting, correct?
Okay, and what kind of process are we going to go through to determine who's going to participate in this?
They have given me some guidelines of what they would like to see as far as participation. And we have started that list. It would be like Mike Phelps, the county EDC person, one person from a local manufacturing. And then we would decide who the rest of that work group would be. They want about a 10-member work group, that total.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other questions? Oh, yes, Commissioner Gilreath.
I was just curious, the relationship between the item F and the, and the 10-year downtown master plan? What is the relationship between the two documents, organizations, resolutions, or memorandums, or?
I don't know that there is any.
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. That, that may be brought out during the process, I am sure. And it would be certainly a part of the thought process. But as of yet, it is not, the two are not interrelated at this time.
Okay, because, because as I was reading it, I was, I was overwhelmed with some of the terminology in it, and it seemed similar. But, and I was trying to make a distinction of what one group will be doing and another will be doing. And, and I didn't have anything to lean on. And so, I was just curious if we've had previous relationships and, and how they interplay with each other.
Of course, we've got a relationship with NC Main Street that's, you know, longstanding. And they are a part of this process. This is essentially a new program coming out of Commerce. And we're trying to take advantage of that.
Okay, so it's a new program.
So, would it be fair to say, Alan and Mary, that this, as Alan alluded to earlier, that because this is a citywide economic development and the master plan focuses on downtown, it would be likely that there would be overlap because downtown is a key piece of economic vitality for the city.
Exactly.
But citywide also means more than the downtown, outlying areas. And also, there are a few locations for actually within the city limits industry to locate or the malls and so on. So, it looks at a broader picture umbrella of which the downtown is likely to be a good piece. Would that be fair?
That's what we're thinking, that it'll help us, guide us through what we talked about on Saturday, which is, you know, economic development is a multifaceted and thus a multi-pronged approach as to how we can be more successful. And really, that's, that's the way we're looking at it, is what can we learn from this process and utilize from this process to help us as we go through the future in being as competitively successful as we can possibly be in drawing and retaining additional business and industry to Oxford.
Great. Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. So, does anybody have other questions on this item? Okay, then we move forward to item G, which is to adopt a memorandum of understanding and the resolution from the Department of Commerce that will provide service and assistance under the Community Economic Recovery and Resiliency Initiative, abbreviated SERI to the City of Oxford, which is undoubtedly new as well because it's related to COVID. Does anybody have any questions on this item? And would it be fair to say that this is specifically related, you know, whereas the other one is a long-term economic development plan for citywide, this is related to moments of crises and how to rebound?
Right. That is correct.
Okay, is there, and so it'll be a different set of stakeholders that will be identified for this process?
Based on my conversations with Bruce, this will work interchangeably with the first work group. Because the, the stakeholders of each group would be reviewing these same sort of tasks. This is the first time, one, that they've done both of these programs together. So, we're sort of the guinea pig. But we had asked for the citywide economic development five-year plan first. And then this second program came out and we didn't want to wait seven months to be able to take advantage of this. And so, they are working with us to do these simultaneously so that we can get the most out of the time that we're taking of the work group that's being created.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, then we are at the consent agenda. Just pretty straightforward. So, just minutes and consider in, okay, so item, okay, so I see. I'm sorry, I was a little confused. So, consent agenda is the finance report, the meeting minutes, and reappointing John Toby to the zoning board of adjustment. Any questions on any of those items? Anybody? Okay, then. At this time, board members that want anything to add, Mayor Protem Harris?
No, ma'am, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. And starting to my left, Commissioner Gilreath?
Nothing, I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Kern?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. We received the thing about Elmwood Cemetery. Is that, I think, and I don't remember, 20-some thousand dollars, is that to tell us how to fix the problem?
Yes, that's to provide us with options on how to address the problem out there.
That's not fixing it.
That's not fixing it, no. It's a. That's not fixing it, no. It's a complex issue, as you can imagine, out there that we may have to go through, and hopefully they can come up with an option that we will not disturb the cemetery any further. That's my hope. My hope is that we can find some to deal with the stormwater without having it routed back through the same location.
So are you thinking, so your goal would be, and admittedly, as we were speaking about earlier, I have my granddaughter, so I haven't had a chance to review that. So the goal would be to reroute the stormwater entirely away from near these graves?
That would certainly be preferable, depending upon the ability to accomplish that, and of course, the cost of doing that. Stormwater regulations get kind of picky about, you know, diverting it and how you can divert it and all kinds of things, so it's it's not just out there doing whatever you want, taking a backhoe forcing the water the way you want it to go, unfortunately, but my conversation with them was to provide, you know, options to the city regarding the stormwater through the cemetery and how we could best deal with that, including diversion.
So are there currently pipes under the cemetery to deal with some of the stormwater, or is just collecting there?
No, there were pipes there, put in there forty, fifty years ago. I'm not sure exactly the date and time, but they were terracotta or clay. And they have over, well, I think there's a little bit of AC in their cement pipe as well, but mostly terracotta running through the cemetery. And they, it's, they've just disintegrated in a number of places and/or collapsed, and yeah, it's... You've got places that are starting to wash out when we have significant rain events, and we're fearful of what could result if we don't address it.
So drains were put in as a result of, they were there prior to the cemetery being full, or we put the drains in to protect the cemetery?
I think the drains were put in to protect the cemetery. If you go out there, where the issue is and where the old pipe was, there's a natural draw. So of course, you know, water's going to seek its own course. And I'm sure that the stormwater drainage pipe, there's also a collection culvert or basin out there right near where Mr. Hancock has his family plots. And that is where the collection coming down from the street and area above collects it and then sends it through the cemetery. And you can tell it's just a natural draw, so I'm sure it was running through there in some form, fashion, years and years before. And I don't know, you know, if it was fine and dandy, as long as you had enough property to accommodate the stormwater running down through there, however it was running down through there, could have been an open gully. How wide, I don't know, but when plots began to be sold right next to it, then I'm sure they started to decide on how to create a little bit more property by filling that in and putting in the piping. And now you've got grave sites literally right adjacent to the stormwater pipe, and it's an issue.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on this item? Or Commissioner Curran, would you have any follow-ups?
No follow-up, but a couple of items.
Okay.
If everybody else is through with that one.
Anybody else have anything about the cemetery? Okay.
One question, though, regarding this basic stormwater. It's not necessarily about the cemetery, but stormwater in general. What typically have we been doing with stormwater issues over property? Whether it's the cemetery, or personal property, or city property? How have we been addressing that?
Well, we try to stay out of personal property. So we don't go on personal property.
What do we call Elmwood Cemetery then?
Cemetery is owned and operated by the City of Oxford, so I'm looking at it as it's publicly operated, because we still own the roads and any properties that have not been sold in plots, as well as all the property that is between plots. And we still go out and maintain and mow and do all those things, so it's essentially a city operation. Stormwater, of course, is something that various municipalities handle in different ways. Stormwater, as you're going to find out here over the course of the next couple of years, as we get into a few of these projects, is very expensive to deal with, and with the city unfortunately did not have a lot of resources in stormwater, as far as stormwater fees, they've always been marginal in order to create basically a fund to go out and address some of these stormwater needs. Now, we've addressed the one out on near Alston Court, right out there. And that one was done a year and a half, two years ago, whatever it has been. I forgot the amount of that, but it was multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars just for that one project. We've got, of course, other areas in the city identified that need some attention as far as stormwater is concerned. Fortunately, we've been rebuilding stormwater fund a little bit. The board did increase the fee a little bit last year, I think by fifty cent, I believe. So that has increased it a little bit, and we'll be potentially addressing Elmwood Cemetery, as well as the project that we spoke about Saturday, which is down on Cherry Street, which is another area that is in sore need of having some stormwater work done. But their stormwater is a never-ending challenge. I mean, it seems like the more that you develop and the more impervious surface that is created, the more stormwater that you have, and it's, you're constantly going to chase your tail with stormwater projects, and it's just a part of what we do and how we do it, and it gets more complex and more expensive the more you grow, quite honestly.
Okay, thank you. Back to Commissioner Curran to finish his list of questions.
Thank you. These don't have to be answered tonight. I'll just direct them to the manager, and he can get back to me. Over a year ago, we were looking at some property that Mr. Yancy was getting from the Watkins, and it was not a wild enough easement, I believe. Just wondering where we're standing on that. Like I said, I don't have to know tonight, but I need to get back to him and let him know. I've been approached by tractor trailers being parked on city streets. I believe that's a violation of the city ordinance.
It is.
I've had a, some calls about begging, panhandling, a little bit more than begging, but demanding money in various places around town. Around McDonald's, out at Walmart, some of their stores around town. Pretty much all over town. We had talked about doing something about that previously. I don't know what we can do. Would like, and like I said, you can get back to me tomorrow, whenever, when you give me an answer of what the police department can do. That's about it for right now.
Was that the one we were waiting to hear about, a court case either in Greensboro or Charlotte?
Yes.
Greensboro.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that attorney of Burnett advised us, was it last? Last?
It was, yeah, it's about a year ago. Yes, ma'am.
About a year ago.
It's been a little over a year ago. Because it was real before we started meeting, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, but he was saying, you know, he preferred to wait until the outcome of that particular case.
I think we need to do something. We don't need to keep waiting.
No, I'll check with him since he's not with us this evening. See if he's heard anything. I've not talked to him about that subject in about six or eight months, so I'll find out.
It's... I think it's getting much worse than what I've been being told. And I think that's all I got.
Commissioner, can I follow up on your question about the Mr. Yancy and the property, and that just is, I'm not remembering that at all. Can you refresh my memory a little bit about that, please?
Ms. Hart could probably... Terry, is she still on?
I'm still on, but I'm kind of lost on that one myself.
Valentino Yancy was buying a piece of property from the Watkins. But his access was thirty feet, supposed to be thirty-five. I believe that my member was right. When is some action being taken on there?
Yeah, I'll get with the attorney Burnett. He had advised that that type of meeting probably should be in person, and I'll see if that's still his assessment on that, and we'll be ready to put it on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I'm just writing myself a note. Thank you.
Alan, I will send attorney Burnett an email and copy you on it, please.
Thank you.
And it is correct, is it not, with the respect to the tractor trailers, that that is something that is prohibited in our ordinances? So...
I believe it is. Parking them on city streets is, yes.
It might be the issue that, as often is the case for our code enforcement officer, sometimes the infraction happens after hours, because a trailer might be parked there, then they're driving it away.
I think this is police department.
It is.
This is the police department? Oh, okay, okay, so that makes it a little easier. Because I was going to say, I'm a good one for taking pictures at all hours of the day and sending the proof to our code enforcement officer, and he's extremely responsive. So I just was going to share that that there's always that option. But if it's police department, I guess we don't need to worry about that. Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner. So you're done with your list?
I am.
Okay, Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Commissioner Tovey?
No, nothing to add.
Commissioner Fields?
With the, we're all aware that the governor has lacked some of the gatherings. Has there been any information about any of the club-type places we have here in Oxford reopening that you know of?
They are still somewhat limited as far as, you know, the size. I think it's, it went from ten to twenty-five, something like that.
Twenty-five inside, fifty outside.
Outside, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there is still some limitation there. The curfew was lifted, allowing people, well, service establishments, bars, whatever, to go from nine to eleven o'clock now. And the curfew was lifted, so that's kind of where it is at the moment.
Okay, thanks.
So in essence, what it does is the people who are already operating are our, are able to operate at expanded hours, as they, you know, were forced to contract, and now they can go back to eleven. But, and anybody else who can do a gathering for twenty-five or less? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any further questions?
No.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, since I started with you. Oh, never mind, I'm just seeing a message, so I'll come back to you, Mayor Pro Tem. So we have Commissioner Bridges is online.
Yeah, I'm on my phone.
Oh, my heavens, to Betsy, when did you join us?
Yeah. Oh, I've been on probably about twenty-five, thirty minutes.
Oh, okay, if that happens. Well, excellent.
For whatever reason, my computer would not let me, the code was not working. I don't know what was going on.
Were you copying and pasting it? I have found that that works better than typing it in for some odd reason. But if this...
I did not do that, but I, you know, I mean, I've been, I've gotten in all the other times.
Okay.
I did not copy and paste it, I just typed it in.
Okay.
And I made sure my caps were off, so I just decided to call in as an attendee.
Excellent. So in the future, if that happens for anybody, if you come in and all you show up on is as a phone number, please announce yourself so we can acknowledge that you're here, because I truly apologize, Commissioner Bridges, I had no idea you were on the call. So we're glad you're here, and also for the record, we can then make sure that it's noted in the record who's attending. But with that, is there anything that you would like to bring up tonight?
No.
Okay, so then what I was going to do, thank you, I was going to circle back around to Mayor Pro Tem, just in case, because you went first, and if anybody, you know, you had any additional thoughts, was there anything you wanted to add?
You talking to me?
Yes, sir.
No, ma'am.
Okay, excellent. Well, if there isn't, Mr. Manager, Mr. Thornton, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, not this evening, other than to say thank you for everyone, everyone's participation and patience on Saturday in getting through our first virtual retreat. So thank you to everybody for that.
Thank you. Thank all the staff that are here online, that many of you created presentations for us to review, and we really appreciate that. It was actually very helpful, I think, to have some of that information ahead of time. So, so thank you for your time and energy on that, and I will accept a motion to adjourn if that is the pleasure of the board.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fields, any discussion? Okay, then I'm going to do the roll call, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Gilreys?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. To each of you, be safe and sound, stay dry. Make the stormwater not reach your house.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, take care.
I'll see you at seven, Cheryl.
Yes, sir, I'll see you at seven, and Chairman will be there.
Good.
Thank you.